So now we're gonna jump into Revelation, maybe, eventually. I want to go to Mark 13 first, but let's go ahead and start with a word of prayer, and then we'll kick off here in chapter eight. Father, I thank you for the time to pause and reflect, and to study your word, and pray for your blessing on this time, that you continue to grow us in accordance with your will, that we would just continually be transformed more and more into the image of your Son, and that we would continue to grow in your grace and in your mercy, and that, Father, we would be faithful in the days that we have here on this earth, that we would be faithful in service to you. Help us to separate the things of you, and the things of this world, the things that are passing away, and the things that will last forever. Please, give us that discernment, and I pray that in our study tonight, that those things will become clearer. And, Father, we pray that, whether it's tomorrow or 2,000 years from now, that you would still give us that sense of urgency in anticipation of the coming of your Son. Father, we thank you for just how awesome you are and how you work all things for your glory. We pray all these things, in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, there we go. Now, so I was thinking, I was like, here we are knee-deep in Revelation, right? And I don't think we've read from Mark 13 or, you know, Matthew 24. So tonight, I want to at least read through, just real quick. We don't need to stop and unpack it, but like, maybe you can hear some of the connections and similarities to what we're actually working through in Revelation, okay? So, here we go, I'm just gonna read through it. "So Jesus, as he was going out of the temple, one of his disciples said to him, 'Teacher, behold what wonderful stones and what wonderful buildings.' And Jesus said to him, 'Do you see these great buildings? Not one stone will be left upon another which will not be torn down.' As he was sitting on the Mount of Olives, opposite the temple..." Now, this is where the term Olivet Discourse comes from, because he was sitting on the Mount of Olives, overlooking the temple.
What chapter are we in?
Mark 13, Mark 13. "Peter and James and John and Andrew were questioning him privately. Tell us, when will these things be? And what will be the sign when all these things are going to be fulfilled? And Jesus began to say to them, 'See to it that no one misleads you. Many will come in my name, saying, 'I am he,' and will mislead many. When you hear of wars and rumors of wars, do not be frightened; those things must take place, but that is not yet the end. For nation will rise up against nation, and kingdom against kingdom; there will be earthquakes in various places; there will also be famines. These things are merely the beginning of birthpangs. But be on your guard, for they will deliver you to the courts, and you will be flogged in the synagogues, and you will stand before governors and kings for my sake as a testimony to them. The gospel must first be preached to all the nations. When they arrest you and hand you over, do not worry beforehand about what you are to say, but say whatever is given you in that hour; for it is not you who speak, but it is the Holy Spirit. Brother will betray brother to death, and a father his child; and children will rise up against parents and have them put to death. You will be hated by all because of my name; but the one who endures to the end, he will be saved. But when you see the abomination of desolation standing where it should not be..." Let the reader understand. "...then those who are in Judea must flee to the mountains; the one who is on the housetop must not go down or go in to get anything out of his house; and the one who is in the field must not turn back to get his coat. But woe to those who are pregnant and to those who are nursing babies in those days; but pray that it may not happen in the winter; for those days will be a time of tribulation such as has not occurred since the beginning of the creation, which God created until now and never will. Unless the Lord had shortened those days, no life would have been saved, but for the sake of the elect, whom he chose, he shortened the days. And then if anyone says to you, 'Behold, here is the Christ,' or 'Behold, here he is,' or 'He is there,' do not believe him; for false Christ and false prophets will arise, and will show signs and wonders in order to lead astray, if possible, the elect. But take heed, behold, I have told you everything in advance. But in those days, after that tribulation, the sun will be darkened, and the moon will not give its light; and the stars will be falling from heaven; and the powers that are in the heavens will be shaken; then they will see the Son of Man coming in clouds with great power and glory; and then he will send forth the angels, and will gather together his elect from the four winds, from the farthest end of the earth to the farthest end of heaven. Now learn the parable from the fig tree; and its branch has already become tender and puts forth its leaves; you know that summer is near. Even so, you too, when you see these things happening, recognize that he is near, right at the door. Truly I say to you, this generation will not pass away until all these things take place. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my words will not pass away; but of that day or hour no one knows, not even the angels in heaven, nor the sun, but the Father alone. Take heed, keep on the alert, for you do not know when the appointed time will come. It is like a man away on a journey, who upon leaving his house and putting his slaves in charge, assigning to each one his task, also commanded the doorkeeper to stay on the alert. Therefore be on the alert, for you do not know when the master of the house is coming, whether in the evening, at midnight, or when the rooster crows, or in the morning, in case he should come suddenly and find you asleep. What I say to you, I say to all, be on the alert." Just a simple reminder of what Jesus said, that's all. Now let's go to Revelation. Now, as we're reading, you can see some of the connections, and, you know, upon deeper study, you could even look at, look at maybe even some places where that's even partitioned, where there's segments of time. Some scholars have broken that up to see that first part as leading up to and including the fall of Jerusalem in 70 A.D. Others would, you know, take it to 135, with a different revolt and, you know, the removal of the Jews from that area, and then the last part of that segment being of the end. And even like a small break in the middle there of more of the tribulation that's been seen over the last 2,000 years. So, it's kind of an interesting interpretation of that passage, but still wanted to bring that to your attention, because here we are in the trumpets. We've made it through the seals, and here we are in the trumpets, and even gonna get into some woes, oh boy. So, this would not be classified as like the Bible study of joy, right? This is not the happy, joy stuff. But it is still something that shapes our joy, right? It's still something for us to understand, to know the justice of God, to know that he will make all things right, and, yeah, that this world isn't it. And with, as fallen and sinful as it is, this isn't everything. He is going to make everything right, and this is something that we don't usually get to talk about. So, all right. Let's go ahead, and since it's just 13 verses, let's read Revelation 8 again, and then we'll pick up at verse 6. "When the Lamb broke the seventh seal, there was silence in heaven for about half an hour; and I saw the seven angels who stand before God, and seven trumpets were given to them. Another angel came and stood at the altar, holding a golden censer; and much incense was given to him, so that he might add it to the prayers of all the saints on the golden altar, which was before the throne. And the smoke of the incense, which the prayers, with the prayers of the saints, went up before God out of the angel's hand. Then the angel took the censer, and filled it with the fire of the altar, and threw it to the earth; and there followed peals of thunder, and sounds, and flashes of lightning, and an earthquake. And the seven angels, who had the seven trumpets, prepared themselves to sound them; the first sounded, and there came hail and fire, mixed with blood; and they were thrown to the earth, and a third of the earth was burned up; and a third of the trees were burned up; and all the green grass was burned up. The second angel sounded, and something like a great mountain, burning with fire, was thrown into the sea; and a third of the sea became blood; and a third of the creatures which were in the sea and had life died; and a third of the ships were destroyed. The third angel sounded, and a great star fell from heaven, burning like a torch, and it fell on a third of the rivers and on the springs of waters. The name of the star is called Wormwood; and a third of the waters became Wormwood; and many men died from the waters because they were made bitter. The fourth angel sounded, and a third of the sun and a third of the moon and a third of the stars were struck, so that a third of them would be darkened; and the day would not shine for a third of it, and the night in the same way. Then I looked, and I heard an eagle flying in mid-heaven, saying with a loud voice, 'Woe, woe, woe to those who dwell on the earth because of the remaining blasts of the trumpet, of the three angels who are about to sound.'" This is what you're here for. All right. Whew, boy, here we go. This just gets heavier the more we read it. All right, verse 6, returns to the action of verse 2, and leads on to the seven trumpet plagues that follow. "These plagues neither recapitulate each of the sealed judgments, nor do they follow the seals in a strictly chronological sense." So remember what we were talking about before, where we have the sealed judgments, and there's a theory where the trumpet judgments are kind of like just overlaid the sealed judgments, and it just kind of goes deeper from there, right? Then there are some theories that like, oh, well, this is all happening in sequential order. We're just dealing with theories here, right? And and if you're alive at that time, you're like, I knew it! I knew it! It was gonna be this way. I don't think anybody's gonna care. So, once again, as we're approaching this, we're looking at connections, we're looking, and we're gonna see some here in a little bit, connections to the plagues in Egypt, at the Exodus. We're gonna see much more of this idea of judgment in its totality upon the entire earth, upon all of creation. So everything in the world that is fallen or has suffered under the curse is basically gonna experience its own purge. It is gonna go through the fire, and we're gonna see what comes out on the other end. So, so I don't think we need to get caught up, remember, this isn't necessarily a playbook for us to learn how to survive the end. So there's this point where like escapism with the rapture, like, oh, well, we don't have to worry about any of this anyways. We're not gonna be here. And then the other side of like, I need to build my bunker a little bit deeper. I thought I only needed food for seven years. If this is in sequential order, is this gonna last like 14 or 21 years, or, you know, whatever? No. This is a matter of us understanding that God is about to bring judgment on the earth for, on everyone and everything, in disobedience to him. This is a call for every believer to live as the elect, who have a mission while we're alive on this earth. That is just, it should be the most clarifying thing. If you know that everything you ever cared about was gonna burn up, you're gonna value, like, all the stuff in your life is gonna burn up, you're gonna value the relationships that you have. You're gonna make amends, you're going to really press into those. And for us to just kind of read through this, well, we don't want anyone we know to be found in rebellion against God, God, the judge over heaven and earth. Right? So, as this is just, it should be motivating for us as we're reading this, not to hide in a bunker, or not to just, oh, I'm not gonna be here anyways. It's a mentality of mission. And remember, in the first century, for all these churches, seven churches in modern-day Turkey, and in Asia Minor at that time, they're reading this, and they're about to go through persecution. And they're like, you know what? We've got a job to do. We have a mission, we need to stick to this, even if it comes at the cost of our lives. That is how important this mission is. And so even as we're reading this, not to get caught up in like, okay, what order is this happening, or anything like that, just to stay focused, and as we're reading, just to marvel at everything that God is going to do. So, all right. "The sixth seal found people fleeing to the mountains and calling for sanctuary against the wrath of the Lamb." Chapter 6, verses 15 and 17. "The tribulation of this period is now portrayed in a more advanced fashion; while the first four seals depicted judgments that are the inevitable consequences of human sinfulness..." So remember the four horsemen, right? And we were talking about, there was a theory that those were happening cyclically over the last 2,000 years, or leading up to this very concentrated period of judgment referred to as a tribulation. So the trumpets here reveal the actual involvement of God in bringing punishment upon a wicked world. So we've just raised the stakes here. So if the first sealed judgments were much more in line with what humanity does to itself, now we're looking at like what God brings in judgment. "So the trumpet plagues are directed against a world adamant in its hostility toward God; as the intensity of the judgments increases, so also does the vehemence with which people refuse to repent." And we're gonna see that later on. "But the trumpet judgments are not final; so they affect a significant portion, but not all of the earth. One-third occurs 12 times in verses 7 through 12." One-third. "Their purpose is not so much retribution as it is to lead people to repentance. Like the watchman and his trumpet in Ezekiel 33, they warn the people of impending danger." This is just a shot across the bow. This is God letting them know that like, I mean, we just read through this, like, these are horrific in the scope of it. I mean, imagine if we saw this on the news this coming week. I mean, that would be, I mean, everybody's lives would be changed. Even if it happened on the other side of the earth and didn't affect us directly, oh, man. That would just be life-changing. Everything would change from here forward, right? Taking this literally. "So the division of the seven trumpets into groups of four and three, or four, two, and one, is like that of the seals. As for the first four trumpet plagues, are directed toward the world of nature." So this is chapter 8, verses 7 through 13, it's directed towards nature. "So the four horsemen," chapter 6, verses 1 through 9, "relate to events that take place on earth; but like in both, there's kind of a change. The fifth and sixth of both series are separated from the last by a parenthesis, chapter 7 and chapter 10, verse 1 through chapter 11, verse 13." Everybody catch that? Everybody tracking? Okay, let me read through that again. So, we're talking about whether it be the trumpets or with the seals, the first four are kind of like a section unto its own. But then we have the fifth and sixth of both the sealed judgments and the trumpets are separated from the last, number 7. And number 7 is separated by like an interlude or a kind of a parenthetical, like, you know, there's a little bit more background, there's something else going on that's gonna introduce or needs to happen before number 7 happens. Does that make sense? Everybody seeing that? "In the trumpet sequence, there is an increase in severity over the seals. The trumpets go beyond the seals, and their more detailed portrayal of the judgment of God on evil." Let's see here. "So as plagues preceded the release of the children of Israel from their Egyptian masters, so plagues will precede the Exodus of the church from hostile political powers. They are the prelude to that great and final Exodus in which the church is taken out of the world and enters..." This is Mount speaking, "into the eternal presence of God. Constant allusion throughout this section to the Egyptian plagues is a way of emphasizing that in the last days, God will again bring punishment upon those hostile powers that oppress his people." So we're dealing here with that montage of divine judgments upon a recalcitrant world which leads to the return of Jesus Christ as sovereign Lord. Now, let me present a couple different theories here. One, because we haven't talked about the rapture yet, at all. And let me just bring up a book here, Not Afraid of the Antichrist: Why We Don't Believe in a Pre-Tribulation Rapture. This is from Michael L. Brown and Craig Keener. This is actually pretty good. And it's really well-written, tons of sources, it's good stuff. So I would definitely recommend Forty Questions About the End Times, Dr. Eckhart Schnebel, and Not Afraid of the Antichrist. Both of them, really good books, easy to read, and definitely a lot to think about there. And with that is, and maybe you're familiar with, like, there's pre-trib, or mid-trib, or post-trib, rapture, and then I'll even post a, throw one more out there of no rapture. And so, now, I'm not intending to go like super deep into this right now, but just to point out that there has not been a very clear point of the removal of the church. Actually, just the opposite, we have angels sent to actually mark, so the 144,000, so, who are still on the earth, right? And there was numerous things that had happened leading up to that time, and then there's plenty of things happening after that. Now, I'm sure you could pose it, you know, pose different theories as to like where they could be, or how they could be taken out at whatever time. I have landed at a point that in my responsibility and ministry, that I would rather preach perseverance than escapism. Because how bad are things gonna get before there's ever the tribulation? I don't know, but things have gotten pretty bad in different areas of the world for the last 2,000 years. And why would I ever preach that God is gonna keep you from those troubles when there have been millions, billions of others who have suffered horrific fates in the name of Jesus Christ? I would rather preach perseverance. I would rather train or disciple perseverance than something like escapism, and I just refer to it as that. It's okay, we can totally disagree on the rapture, whether it exists, or will exist, or when it's gonna happen. Listen, if you are persevering and being faithful in the commission that we've all been given to be and make disciples of Jesus Christ, it's gonna take care of itself. God will take care of it, if and when, right? So, it's a matter of having our priorities straight and being focused on the things we need to, and not being afraid of what is to come. We need to keep our eyes on Jesus, on the mission that he has given us to carry forward what he started 2,000 years ago. So that's just where I land on this. So if you were looking for the secret recipe of like, ah, Luke, when am I gonna be gone and not have to like really pay attention to the rest of this? Sorry to disappoint you, but that's not gonna happen in this class, so.
Ever, at any point, even just what you read in Mark.
Even what I read in Mark, yeah, that seemed to sound like that. That's right. So, the question is like, I mean, does Jesus ever teach on, like, you know, a life free from trouble, or even a rapture? And, you know, no, like, he doesn't, he doesn't, actually, just the opposite. He warns us of trouble, especially for following him. And so that's where, I mean, it's easy to preach prosperity in first-world country where lowest income's living better than anybody in the developing world. And so, this is something we really need to have that gut check, and just to understand that like, I mean, we have been incredibly blessed. I guess it depends on how you look at it, because maybe some of that blessing, or what we perceived as blessing, is really more of a distraction from what really is important for us to be doing here on this earth. Now, it, because with this, with that blessing comes responsibility. And that's a challenge for each of us to, like, how have we been discipled within this culture, but yet as Christians to handle the freedom and security in which we live, as well as the wealth? It's a challenge for each and every one of us, because remember, Because remember, we don't have to give an account to the president, we have to give an account to God at the end of this life. So, yeah, I mean, we should absolutely expect trouble. Now, that being said, we shouldn't go out and look for it. Well, we laugh, but in the early church, really, after, you know, 100, you would see people going out and really trying to be martyred. Like, trying to, you know, they're soliciting for persecution because there was such a reputation around that. They were, I mean, they were kind of looking for their badge of honor. And, yeah, we've come a long way, or whatever. And so, and so, really, like, it is something for us to be challenged by of can we just stick to the mission that we've been called to, right? We grow as disciples and we share that with those around us. We lead someone to Christ, we participate in evangelism, we share the good news with them. They believe, great, we don't just send them off to like a church. Stay with them and disciple them, pour into them everything that God has taught you in your life, share with them. That is disciple-making. Oh, yeah, and don't forget to tell them to go and make disciples. And that starts immediately, right? I mean, when they're all like, I mean, amped up and on fire, don't hold them back, let them go. Let them go and share the gospel with everybody they know. Go with them, though. Because you'll probably have to like explain some of the things as they're just running through whatever they know, which might not be very much. It's a beautiful thing to see. And that's my encouragement to everyone, like, that's the mission we have. And when we do that, expect trouble. Expect the enemy, but then expect a whole lot of other people not to like that. Because what we're preaching is transformation. We're preaching change, right? In accordance with God's ways. And a lot of times, many times, much of the time, it is at odds with culture. So, okay, soapbox, there you go. Yeah.
Could you put those books on the Facebook page?
Oh, yeah, I can do that. I'll put the books on the Facebook page. Yep. There you go. All right. Oh, boy, we got 15 minutes. So, all right, going back to verse six, going back to verse six. So, the seven who were given the seven trumpets get ready to blow them. We do not know what is involved in the angels preparing themselves to sound, but it probably means no more than that they raise their instruments in readiness to sound. So, this action would heighten the sense of expectancy. So, imagine being John and witnessing this. Verse seven, with the sounding of the first trumpet, the second major series of calamities begin. The first angel sounds his trumpet, and the response is hail and fire mixed with blood. So, the imagery comes primarily from the seventh Egyptian plague. And that's Exodus, chapter nine, verse 13 through 35. When Moses stretched out his staff toward the sky, God sent thunder, hail, and lightning that flashed down to the ground. Exodus nine, verse 23. The reference to blood probably comes from Joel's prophecy of the last days. Joel, chapter two, verse 31, let's go there. Joel, chapter two, verse 31. I'll probably read, yeah, I'll read verses 30 through 32. Now, I also want to encourage you, like, as we're reading through this, if you don't already have like a Bible reading plan, oh, my goodness. Read Joel, read Zechariah or Zephaniah. Read some of these books that we're dipping into pretty regularly. And you can kind of, and maybe read even some of the background of, you know, when they were prophesying and, you know, what was the situation in the world at that time? Because it just, it adds so much more depth. So, okay. Joel, chapter two, verse 30 through 32. I will display wonders in the sky and on the earth, blood, fire, and columns of smoke. The sun will be turned into darkness and the moon into blood before the great and awesome day of Yahweh comes. And it will come about that whoever calls on the name of Yahweh will be delivered. For on Mount Zion and in Jerusalem, there will be those who escape, as Yahweh has said, even among the survivors whom Yahweh calls. There you go. Remember, all of this is being done by God. And this is all leading up to Jesus's return. So, this isn't Satan doing this. This is God with His acts of judgment. So, just to clarify. All right. The blood refers to the awesome color of the storm rather than the fire and destruction that the lightning would cause. The syntax of the verse suggests that the blood-red storm appeared in heaven before it was cast upon the earth. In the Talmud, the sixth heaven is pictured as a storehouse of hail, storm, and noxious vapors, maintained within gates of fire. So, it's kind of an interesting cross-reference there. The Sibylline oracles speak of a rain of fire and blood as one of the signs of the end. So, once again, popular work. Great devastation follows in the wake of the storm. A third of the surface of the earth is consumed by fire. Let's go to Zechariah 13. Revelation, go left. Zechariah 13. Reading verses eight and nine. It will come about in all the land declares Yahweh, that two parts in it will be cut off and perish, but the third will be left in it. And I will bring the third part through the fire, refine them as silver is refined, and test them as gold is tested. They will call on my name, and I will answer them. I will say they are my people, and they will say Yahweh is my God. So, in Zechariah 13, two-thirds of the people of the land are to die, and one-third are to be brought through the refiner's fire. So, in our text, it is one-third of the land and its vegetation that is devastated by fire. So, the fraction, if taken literally, especially in the next plague, borders on absurdity. It indicates in a general sense that although God is bringing punishment upon the earth, it is not as yet complete and final. The purpose of the visitation is to warn people of the full wrath of God yet to fall, and in so doing, to bring them to repentance. Repentance. That is the goal here. So, make sure when you're out sharing the gospel, repentance is a part of that. It has to be a part of that. If you're not sharing a message of repentance, it's not really the gospel you're sharing. So, so.
Does it make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah, absolutely. So, the question is, like, how, what do we, how do we know that John was seeing this and not just repackaging the Old Testament minor prophets?
Right.
Or a lot of that imagery? Well, two things. One, we actually have him, you know, saying, and then I heard, and then I saw, different things like that, right? And even just the first four chapters are, you know, first three chapters are much different than what we see in any of the prophets. Now, it's what I said before is that, I think I've said this a couple of times, even though what we're reading has been, it has similarities to, or even direct quotations of the Old Testament, you can look at it one of two ways, right? John is filling in maybe some of the gaps for what he's seeing, or there's actually the same vision giver as what the prophets saw, as what John's seeing. They're both getting it from the same source. So, why do we need to wonder why it matches up so well, right? But it is important to recognize that John read his Bible and could reference these things throughout this vision. Because remember, I mean, it is a whole nother thing to like write it down. And so, as he's meditating on it, is he thinking of Joel? Is he thinking of what Zechariah wrote? And saying, oh, I've heard that before, I saw that, and now, like, here it is in text. Let me bring that together. Yeah, I mean, absolutely. The references to the Old Testament prophets only serve to reinforce this vision. And it shows God's consistency, let's not forget that. God is consistent, right? In the message that He is delivering, and I mean, really, I mean, as this is being written, like, the entire scripture over 1,500 years, it's a level of consistency, even stretched across like culture and, I mean, just different time periods and the evolution of even language itself in different languages, the consistency is unrivaled in anything in human history. There's different thoughts that, so, the question is, you know, would John have had scripture to read on the Isle of Patmos, you know, in his exile? And there's different thoughts where like he had, because he was a much older man, that he had a lot more leniency. And so, they would have had, you know, some scriptures that allowed him to bring some scrolls or, you know, or there was a small town down there that maybe there were some available. Because the idea was really just to separate and isolate him, send him into exile so that his influence would be limited. And so, as long as he's there keeping quiet, I don't think anybody cares, so. Fine, give him something to read. How long after receiving the vision did he actually write it? That's a great question. So, some scholars would believe, and even if, you know, on Isle of Patmos, if, you know, the tour guides are, you know, they're sharing some of the tradition that they have locally, but that John had a scribe with him. And so, as he's receiving this vision, he's describing what he's seeing to his scribe, and the scribe is writing it down. And, well, it's a possibility, it's just nothing to get dogmatic about. It could have been something that he was scribbling stuff down as, you know, when he woke up or if he didn't have a scribe with him, but and that scribe also was his disciple. So, but because he was older, he was allowed to have somebody to help take care of him. So, as we're reading through, we're just dipping our toes into this, the big stuff, right? Are we to take this literally? And, or is this part of just some of the imagery? And so, it's supposed to elicit maybe other ideas or other ideas of judgment, like from Exodus, right? The plague's brought on by Egypt. And and I, the only, the only answer I'm comfortable with is, is kind of reading it with a both-and mentality. That there is going to be a judgment coming. So, we can all like land there, right? What is the severity going to be? It's going to be severe, right? Now, who's measuring out a third of what? Not me. And that's why, like, when we're reading this, that things are, I mean, we're talking about cataclysm, right? And that's a whole nother area of like cataclysm theory and all this other stuff. And so, so as, like, that's what we're talking, that's what we're addressing here is just earth shaking, like cataclysms. And it's happened before without it being the end, right? And, but what we're talking about something is as it goes on in its totality. But as we'll see here in verses 13 and 14, there's going to be some that are alive through the end of that. So, so I think it is to understand, like, there is a literal aspect of it. That's how it's being presented. Yeah, that is. So, when we're talking about like mountain splitting or different things like that, what, what are we to take literal, what are we to take as, you know, figuratively? And really, I think some of the imagery, like when we talk about the beast, we know that a lot of that language is figurative, is metaphorical for representing a group, right? When we talk about the sea, usually that represents, in prophetic literature or apocalyptic genre, it represents people. Women usually represent like religion. So, there's all these different, and we'll get, we'll get into that. And it's interesting that none of that imagery is kind of represented here in what we're reading. And so, what we can see is like different sections of this, even within the overall text of Revelation. So, I know that might have been a lot to chew on. But as of right now, as we're reading these natural disasters and then unnatural disasters that are being brought on, yeah, once again, there's nothing you can do to stop these if they were happening, right? There's not much you can do to, you know, prevent from it, prevent it from happening. So, I think it's healthy for us, you know, just as we're reading, that's why we want to keep coming back to like mission, right? Because what if you had the whole book of Revelation memorized, but you were out there living like a pagan? Boy, that's not going to do you much good. Actually, as this stuff starts rolling down, you're like, oh, yeah, that's literal. Uh-oh. So, yeah, so, does it matter if it's literal or real or not? It will matter when it's happening.
Well, yeah.
You will be abiding by it until you're not. And so, so, yeah. That's why, like, as we're reading this, I try not to be like super dogmatic over like, oh, there's a clue of like, oh, here's the third of the earth that's going to be affected by this. It's just a silly game to play, and I don't think it has any real purpose, right? So, yeah. No, I mean, great questions, fair questions, right? Are we taking this literally or figuratively? You know, and as we get into some of the other imagery that will kind of parallel maybe some things in Daniel, right? Or even some in Ezekiel, that like we'll see like, oh, okay, that is taken figuratively. That is taken as, you know, this is representing something else.
You're probably going to get an A on repetitive questions. You're going to spot on all of you.
So far, so good. That's right, that's right. So, another question that I got on the break was, so, are we in the end times right now? And without any doubt, yes, we are. Yes, we are. But just not in the way you think. Oh, I got somebody. Now, so, I don't know if I've talked about it in here, but for the early church, for the apostles, the Messiah had come. The long-awaited Messiah had come. And in the same way that we connect Jesus's return with the end, well, so did they. well, so did they. So for Jesus to come, and then, you know, that's why like, some of them were a little bit slower on the uptake to like, "Oh, Jesus is the Messiah!" Like, "We've been hanging out for the last couple of years, and like, I, how did I not see this? He's the Messiah! He really is," you know? And if they didn't believe before, definitely after the resurrection, right? Now, for them, the end times started at that moment. At the moment Jesus came on the scene and presented Himself for ministry, that was kicking off the end times. And that's why, that's what frames the rest of the New Testament. That's why Paul was willing, like, upon this revelation, this vision of Jesus, he was ready to give up his life and to go, and to go throughout the Mediterranean. Like, I'm sure he would have been happy to go to his hometown, stay in Jerusalem, and just preach the gospel there. But that wasn't enough. He was anticipating Jesus coming back in his lifetime, so he was going. He was going, he saw it as his mission to go through the diaspora, the dispersion of Jewish people, to the Jew first, then to the Gentile, and just to hit the whole Roman Empire, to let them know that Jesus is Lord, and Caesar is not, and Jesus died to atone for your sins. Repent. That was Paul's mission, and he was ready to give up his life, and he ended up doing that. As well as the rest of the apostles going in every which direction throughout the world. Right? Thomas making his, his way to India, South India. I mean, that's amazing. Like, that's why they were willing to go. Because, because Jesus was coming back at any moment, and they had to give an account for their lives. And He told them to go. And to go and make disciples. And that's what they did, and that's why there's still a church in South India. That's why, here we are, 2,000 years later, on the other side of the world. Just across the pond, right? And so, yeah, they were carrying out that mission because they were expecting Jesus coming. And that's what frames some of the things Paul says, like in Thessalonians, in both letters, of like, "Hey, I know some of you guys are getting a little upset, or getting a little antsy, because, you know, or, or somebody's leading you astray, because, you know, they said the resurrection already happened. You haven't missed it, trust me, you haven't missed it. It is yet to come, right?" And so, you know, because they were wondering, like, "Hey, is He going to come?" Some of you have already fallen asleep. They've already died. They didn't expect to die before Jesus coming back. But in their minds, it was the end times. And I think that is the healthiest mindset for us to have. That, "Oh, the Messiah's come, and He's coming back." For us to know that this is the end times. But not in the Left Behind series mentality. I just said it, there you go. Well, I just named names. And so, but, but really, much more in the intent of ministry. Right? So it's not a matter of us being like, "Taken out." No, I want to be so disappointed if I get taken out, right? Early in the game. I want to be here and just have this mission in front of me, and I want to see it through. Like, have that mentality, like, if we had that mentality for the rest of our lives, and even if the end, the technical end doesn't happen for another thousand years, what'd you lose? Nothing. But I guarantee you've gained more by having that focus than not. Living with that level of urgency, and just saying, "You know what? I am going to go talk to that person about Jesus." Instead of, "Ah, I'll do it tomorrow," or, "Oh, no, that'd be weird, because, you know, I've never met them before," and, you know. That's between you and God, right? If the Holy Spirit is urging you to do something, I am encouraging you to honor that. Honor the Holy Spirit's leading in your life to go share the gospel. Because we are each, each and every one of us are going to have to give an account for our lives before God, and before Christ. So, is this the end times? I don't know about you, but like, if God is gracious enough, I've got maybe 50 years left. That's not guaranteed. I ain't telling what, I ain't, I ain't, I am not even going into what everybody else has. I ain't speculating on that. But, but really, I mean, in comparison, like, that's, I mean, goodness gracious, yeah. Just, just thinking through that, like, oh, this is my like, end game here. Even if it's just 50 years, like, man, I got, I got a lot of stuff due. Like, how much do I want this to echo into eternity, right? Because the first 40 wasn't all roses. Wasn't all honoring the Lord. Now, praise the Lord, my, all my sins have been atoned for, but, but that burden has been taken away and lifted to free me to ministry. That can be just channeled into just this focused energy to, to, to share the good news. Man, there you go, look at that.
We get three servants every week.
Get to preach, just preaching to myself out loud, and that's all. So, yeah, I mean, because, you know, like, this isn't my mindset 100% of the time. But it's stuff like this, it's a good shot in the arm, just be like, "Oh, yeah, you know what? That's what I gotta do." So, and, and you know, and sadly, it's, yeah, it's just not, this isn't a big focus of Christian culture. You know, it's been relegated to like, little pockets of it, but not like, a holistic approach of, and even the reason and rationale why. I mean, you know, just like the end times. End times gets, you know, just left to obscurity, and, you know, just kind of its own little thing out here that, you know, it's just easy pickings for the rest of the world to make fun of, instead of for us to realize, but like, "Man, Messiah already showed up." We can't be distracted by how awesome His first coming is, to like, lose sight of the second. Because a lot of times that's what, we're just looking backwards, without like, really in the spirit of the apostles, and just, I mean, their minds were blown, right? The long-awaited, the promised one, came. Came in the way of a baby, by the way, right? So think about that one. Like, they are, like, everything we're reading, and we're going to read, about this triumphant return, that's what they were expecting. That should put a whole new perspective on the nativity. They were expecting a conquering king, and they got a baby. In, in a rather scandalous situation at that. Not born in a palace. Oh, man. So, if God's got that many surprises for the first coming, you know, like, "Luke, are we to take this literally, or what?" I don't even know. I don't even know, I'm just reading through this. We can cross-reference with the rest of Scripture, but I'm sure there's going to be plenty of curveballs for what we're reading, right? And then, that's also why I say, "Read the prophets." I know that that is not the most popular thing for Christians today. We like to stay in the last third of the book. But really, read the prophets, read the Old Testament to really just dig deep into the roots of what we're reading now. Because it's in those details that is probably going to connect a lot of these dots. So, alright, there you go. Great questions on the break, I really appreciate them, so. Okay, just finishing up a couple of comments on seven. "So the reference to the burning of a third of the trees and all the green grass completes the description of the Holocaust that followed the first trumpet blast. The trees that are destroyed are probably to be taken as fruit trees, which were so important to the maintenance of life in Palestine. Green grass should be taken to mean all vegetation. Although the plague is directed primarily against nature, it seriously affects the human race as well. The trees and vegetation that are burned are within the third of the land surface devastated by fire." So the verse is not a variance of chapter nine, verse four, "which prohibits hurting the grass." Verses eight and nine, let me read those real quick, just to refresh memory. "The second angel sounded, and something like a great mountain burning with fire was thrown into the sea, and a third of the sea became blood; and a third of the creatures which were in the sea and had life died; and a third of the ships were destroyed." "So as the first plague scorched a third of the land, the second brings destruction to a third of the sea. With the sounding of the second trumpet, something like a huge mountain on fire is thrown into the sea. A third of the sea becomes blood, with the result that a third of the marine life dies; and a third of the shipping is destroyed. This death and destruction takes place within the third part of the sea affected by the fiery mass." "So in many cases, it is difficult, if not impossible, to identify the source of John's imagery outside of the vision itself. So, so, some find the raw material for this particular plague, this is Mount, in the volcanic action of the area. Less than 20 years before John wrote Revelation, Vesuvius had erupted and destroyed Pompeii and Herculaneum. This catastrophe was widely known and variously interpreted. Among the vol, among the volcanic islands of the Aegean, Thera was especially notable." Thera, or Thira, as it's pronounced, is the island of Santorini. So, that's a fun one there. "So the Greek geogra, geographer Strabo reports the formation of a new island as a result of an eruption in 196 B.C. Now others look to Jewish apocalyptic for the source of the imagery. First Enoch, chapter 18, verse 13 speaks of seven stars like great burning mountains. And the Sibylline oracles, chapter five, verses one, verse 158, tells of a great star from heaven that fell into the divine sea. It is well to remember that a visionary experience may take elements from several sources and blend them together into a totally new figure. Like the figures in a dream, the sources are not controlled by considerations of time or location." So my, this is Mount's kind of leaning into a John pulling from other sources. Or pulling from sources to explain, or to explain what he saw in a way that was familiar to his contemporary audience. Does that make sense? "So although the visions are in essential con, are in essential continuity with the totality of John's experiences, physical, psychic, and spiritual, their ultimate cause is God, and not a decision on the part of the seer to compose a dramatic presentation of the last days. They are visions that he saw." There you go. "So the mention of fire in each of the first three trumpet plagues corresponds to the action of the angel priest of verse five, who filled this, his censer with fire from the altar and hurled it on the earth." Everybody catch that? So the first three trumpet plagues correspond to the angel who had the censer and threw it to the earth. "First there is a violent electrical storm that sets the earth ablaze, verse seven; then a great fiery mass was thrown into the sea, verse eight; and finally, a burning star falls on the inland waters. And the second plague, the blazing mountain turns the waters of the sea into blood. Here, we are reminded of the first Egyptian plague, in which the rivers were turned to blood, killing the fish and making the water undrinkable." Exodus, chapter seven, verses 20 and 21. "The plague in Revelation is not to be understood as widespread pollution from volcanic action. Not only did creatures of the sea die, but shipping was destroyed as well. It represents an eschatological judgment that goes beyond any explanation in terms of natural phenomena. Again, the judgment is partial, it affects but one-third of the sea, its life and commerce. The purpose is to warn and lead to repentance." So you're, you're going to see that this one is actually different than the burning star that we're about to read coming into the ocean, so. Verses 10 and 11. Any questions on those so far? Fire connection with the angel and the censer? There you go. Alright, 10 and 11. "The third angel sounded, and a great star fell from heaven, burning like a torch, and it fell on a third of the rivers and on the springs of water. The name of the star is called Wormwood, and a third of the waters became Wormwood; and many men died from the waters because they were made bitter." "The third plague consists of a burning star that falls from the sky on the inland waters, turning them bitter and causing death of many people. The contamination of the fresh water supply recalls the first Egyptian plague, in which the water was turned to blood, Exodus 7:20. The burning star that falls from the sky may be a great meteorite set afire as it plunges through the earth's atmosphere. Like the blood-red storm and the burning mountain, it is a symbol of divine visitation. God is moving in judgment, and people must repent or bear the full fury of His coming wrath. Some writers note a similar phenomenon in Persian eschatology, but a real parallel is highly doubtful." So Persian would probably be Zoroastrian. "The star falls on a third of the rivers and on the springs of water. It is possible that John may be revealing divine displeasure against the rather widespread worship of supernatural spirits thought to be associated with rivers and springs. Like the other plagues, however, it is directly, directed primarily against the world of nature; only indirectly does it affect people or the spirit world." So, just kind of recap a little bit, with the Exodus plagues, different scholars have, and there's actually a verse that attributes this, that God was taking judgment on the gods of Egypt. And so each of those plagues could be, as they were attacking nature, they could actually be subscribed to different deities in the Egyptian pantheon. So, is that something here? Now obviously, if you were into worshiping Gaia or the earth, well, you're just kind of out of luck here. Because all of these so far are attacking nature, so. Let's see, "The star is named for the effect it has on the water. It is called Wormwood, after the strong bitter taste of the plant of that name." "In the Old Testament, Wormwood was used as a symbol of bitterness and sorrow." Bitterness and sorrow. "Proverbs warns against the strange woman whose lips drop honey, but in the end is bitter as Wormwood." Proverbs, chapter five, verse three and four. "The writer of Lamentations said, 'Praise, remember my affliction in roaming the Wormwood and the gall.'" Lamentations 3:19. "Because Israel has forsaken God, he will feed them with Wormwood and give them water of gall to drink." Jeremiah, chapter nine, verse 15. "When the great star, blazing like a torch, fell on the rivers and springs of water, they became as bitter as Wormwood. It is the reverse of the miracle of Mara, where Moses cast a tree into the bitter waters, and they were made sweet." and they were made sweet. Exodus, chapter 15, verse 25. Although Wormwood itself is not poisonous, its bitter taste suggests death. What John is saying is that a portion of the inland waters were contaminated by a spectacular act of God, and many people died as a result of drinking the water. Repetition of the fractional one-third indicates, as before, the restricted scope of the judgment. Many people, rather than a third of the people, is no more than a stylistic alteration. Any questions on 10 and 11? Wormwood. Bitterness and sorrow. Okay, all right. Moving on here, verse 12. The fourth angel sounded, and a third of the sun and a third of the moon and a third of the stars were struck, so that a third of them would be darkened, and the day would not shine for a third of it, and the night in the same way. So when the fourth angel sounded his trumpet, a third of the sun, moon, and stars were struck with a blow that darkened them for a third of the day and the night. The first part of the verse, when interpreted in parallel with other plagues, seems to indicate a decrease in the intensity of available light as a result of a third of the luminaries being darkened. The last two phrases, however, indicate the total absence of light for a third part of both day and night. This absolute darkness would be far more terrifying than a partial eclipse. Or even a total eclipse like next year. The scene recalls the ninth Egyptian plague with its thick darkness that spread over the land for a period of three days. Exodus, chapter 10, verse 21 through 23. Darkness as a symbol of judgment runs throughout the Old Testament. The prophet Amos spoke of the day of the Lord as a day of darkness rather than light. Amos, chapter five, verse 18. Actually, let's go ahead and go to Amos. Anytime we have the opportunity, right? Chapter five, verse 18. Oh, man, so good. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna read 18 through 20. Alas, you who are longing for the day of Yahweh, for what purpose will the day of Yahweh be to you? It will be darkness and not light, as when a man flees from a lion and a bear meets him, or goes home, leans his hand against the wall, and a snake bites him. Will not the day of Yahweh be darkness instead of light, even gloom with no brightness in it? Wow. For Joel, it will be a day of darkness and gloom, a day of clouds and blackness. Joel, chapter two, verse two. Let's go ahead and go there. Back to Joel. Starting at verse one. Joel, chapter two. Blow a trumpet in Zion and sound an alarm on my holy mountain. Let all the inhabitants of the land tremble for the day of Yahweh is coming; surely it is near. A day of darkness and gloom, a day of clouds and thick darkness. As the dawn is spread over the mountains, so there is a great and mighty people. There's never been anything like it, nor will there ever be again after it, to the years of many generations. Okay, stop there. Jesus, quoting Isaiah, says that in the day of the Lord, the sun will be darkened and the moon will not give its light. Mark, chapter 13, verse 24. If I remember, you reading that in the beginning there? And Jesus is quoting from Isaiah, chapter 13, verse 10. So the fourth trumpet plague is a fulfillment of these prophecies. So in the New Testament, darkness is often connected with the demonic. Unbelieving Israel is to be cast outside into the darkness, where there is weeping and gnashing of teeth. Matthew, chapter eight, verse 12. In 2 Corinthians 6, 14 and 15, light and darkness stand parallel to Christ and Belial. According to Colossians, chapter one, verse 13, the saints are those who have been rescued from the dominion of darkness. The darkness of the fourth plague anticipates the transition from divine warnings to demonic woes. It previews that ultimate excommunication of unrepentant people to the punishment prepared for the devil and his angels. Matthew 25, verse 41. Now, I've heard some scholars actually cite that this darkness being a third, right, third of the luminaries in the sky, actually being the smoke arising out of some of the other calamities. And so, much like a volcanic eruption, I mean, there was, theory goes that like the Dark Ages was brought on by a volcanic eruption in Iceland. And that there were years, like, you know, that there was no harvest, because nothing would grow, because there was just darkness, and the temperature dropped like, on average, five degrees. And I mean, it was just something crazy that happened throughout Europe. And so they're thinking that like, what if there was so much smoke that it blocked out a third of the sky, like, day and night? So, just from that perspective. Just a, just a theory to go along with this. So the other option's a black hole swallowing up a lot of these stars, and, you know. You know, whatever. The aliens, that's right. Oh, man. So any thoughts, questions on 12? 11, 12? All right. There's just not a lot to, you know, go with. We're describing these disasters, supernatural, right? Disasters upon our natural environment. And it's just, it's just, it's bad. It's really bad, you know? That's, that's all I can say. So, yes. So I, instead of throwing ourselves down and, and, you know, I, yes, repenting, repenting is always the safe one, right? But, you know, this might be the perfect time to like, be that person on the street corner with the big sign that says repent for the end is near. I don't know, you know, it's, might be the most opportune time. I'm just gonna go out on a limb here. If you see any of this stuff happening, you have my blessing. Like, I'll make the cardboard sign and everything. I'm just kidding. But like, I mean, you know, when this is affecting a third of the earth, you know, and each of these, like, this is big time. Like, this is getting, this has got to be getting everybody's attention, that is, unless, you know, there's some people in power making pretty good excuses. So we could get into all kinds of deception and, you know, different things like that. But, yeah, to your point, if you're around at this time, like, that just adds even more, like, pressure to the fact that like, oh, oh, man, I've gotta share with everybody. Like, everybody needs to know to repent and that, that Jesus is the only way. I mean, that's even more ardent about doing that, right? Like, that, that just becomes even, that's pressure time. So, fourth quarter, last two minutes. All the toilet paper's gonna be gone.
No, 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 no. Don't use some of it in your basement if you want to.
No, no, no. Now, let me just.
Humor.
Humor, humor. Priorities. Priorities. Any other, any other questions to that? I don't know how you follow up toilet paper. That's right, a little levity here. No, that's always welcome, especially for the next 13 chapters. Actually, it, it's funny, because as we're talking about this, there is gonna be like a little bit of reprieve by the time we get to 12. And it'll kind of be a welcome reprieve, and you should see it as that. Because that's when things kind of like, turn, turn a corner. So, yeah. You know, we just talked about, there is a natural literary flow to this vision and how it's structured. So. All right. So, verse 13. As I watched, then I looked, and I heard an eagle flying in mid-heaven, saying with a loud voice, woe, woe, woe to those who dwell on the earth because of the remaining blast of the trumpet of the three angels who are about to sound. So. We wrap up this chapter, verse 13. Now, I'm reading from the New American Standard Bible, so, in case you were wondering. So once again, John calls attention to the fact that in his vision, he is watching something take place. So even for all the literary reference and, you know, maybe apocryphal influence or whatever else, he's still seeing this. He's still seeing this. Verse 13 serves as a transition between the four plagues brought by God upon nature to lead humankind to repentance and the subsequent demonic woes, in which people will be directly subjected to the forces of the abyss. Previous plagues have been called forth by angelic beings, but those that follow are announced, quite appropriately, by a bird of prey hovering overhead. Just let that one sit for a second.
I forgot to bring that, that reference to the eagle and the vulture.
Oh, right, right. Well, nope, I'm gonna get into it. So, verse 13. The majority of the commentators understand the bird to be an eagle, which figure suggests such qualities of strength and swiftness. In 2 Baruch, an eagle is commissioned to fly without tarrying to the Jews exiled in Babylon and deliver an account of the author's vision. 2 Baruch, chapter 77, verses 17 through 26. 2 Estros records a vision of a three-headed eagle with 12 wings that reigned over all the earth. Others understand the bird to be a vulture, which in this context would symbolize impending doom. So the translation there, vulture or an eagle. Habakkuk described the invading Chaldeans as vultures swooping to devour. Habakkuk, chapter one, verse eight. In either case, it is the predatory nature of the bird that is in view. In chapter 19, verses 17 through 18, the birds of prey, those flying in midair, are gathered to eat the flesh of kings and all people. The eagle vulture hovers in midair so as to be seen by all and cries out in a loud voice, so that none will fail to hear. Woe, woe, woe to the inhabitants of the earth, while in chapter 18, the exclamation woe is twice repeated for emphasis on each of three occasions. Chapter 18, verse 10, 16, and 19. Here it occurs three times to correspond to the three last trumpets. These final plagues are not to fall upon the church, but upon a pagan and wicked world. Unlike the first four trumpets, which affected the source of people's life, the last three fall upon people themselves. The first two woes follow immediately in chapter nine. They are the fifth and sixth trumpet plagues. The third woe is postponed by two major visions in chapter 10, verse one, to chapter 11, verse 13. But even then, when the last trumpet sounds, chapter 11, verses 14 and 15, we do not immediately learn of the nature of the third woe. Instead, there's a scene of heavenly adulation. For this reason, some think that the third woe is the descent of Satan in chapter 12, verse seven. In chapter 12, verse 12, a great voice from heaven says, woe to the earth and the sea, because the devil has gone down to you. He is filled with fury, because he knows that his time is short. Others take the bold judgments of chapter 16 to be the third woe. This, however, would separate in kind the first two demonic assaults from the third judgments of God. So it gets a little dicey there as you're trying to parse this out. But, much like the other two, the seventh kind of opens up something else. So, does that make sense? So, do I need to read that last part again? Everybody, yeah? Okay, so. Let's see, so the third woe, the first two woes follow immediately in chapter nine. They are the fifth and sixth trumpet plagues. The third woe is postponed by two major visions in chapter 10, verse one, to chapter 11, verse 13. But even when the last trumpet sounds, which would be the third woe, we do not immediately learn of the nature of the third woe. So then that gives rise to some people thinking that like, oh, this is actually when Satan comes to the earth. But then you would be separating out, I mean, because that happens chapter 12. Others take it to be, take it, the bold judgments of chapter 16 to actually be the third woe. Just like the sealed judgments, the seventh one opened up these trumpet judgments. They would take the seventh trumpet to be opening up the bold judgments. So. It's not really like, super clear, and that's why there's different theories on that. Just gonna make a joke, but like, you know, if like, you know, if you're there at that time, I guess you can clarify it for everybody else, and, just kidding. So, gee whiz. All right. So we have nine minutes left. Any questions before, because I just at least wanted to read nine? So everybody has sweet dreams tonight? Uh, there's a couple of places that, yeah, talk about woes, but not in that, like, as concise.
Right, right.
Like where it's the eagle, woe, woe, woe.
Right.
There are other woes, like, I mean, just woe to, woe to, you know, but like, they're separated out by each one. Any other questions? All right, chapter nine, we're moving right along. I mean, I'm not saying we're gonna get through Revelation by December, but we're moving. Okay, so just a little bit of a note before I read nine. So John required but six verses to set forth the first four trumpets, so chapter eight, verses seven through 12. But now he's about to devote over three times that space to the next two plagues. This added emphasis corresponds to the seriousness of the calamities that follow. People who earlier were merely discomforted by judgments upon the world of nature are now directly subjected to torments that arise from the underworld. The first woe, chapter nine, verses one through 12, is a horde of demonic locusts that emerges from the abyss and spreads out over the land to torment everyone not marked with the seal of the living God. Now, mind you, this is kind of one of those ideas of like, oh, yeah, there's still believers on the earth, they've been marked, that goes back to six, right? Or, I'm sorry. The, the beginning of seven. The, the beginning of seven, and the 144,000, right? And so, uh, let's see. Oh, I just lost my place. Yeah, the pain and distress are so great that although people seek death, they are unable to find it. The second woe, chapter 9, verse 13 through 19, is a demonic cavalry of some 200 million mounted troops who astride their fire-breathing steeds, sweep over the land, killing a third of its inhabitants. Both trumpets introduce us to grotesque creatures whose appearance corresponds to their evil origin. Even these two plagues, horrible and destructive as they are, fail to deter the survivors from continuing their worship of demons. Unrestrained by the plagues, they continue their practice of idolatry, bloodshed, sorcery, sexual immorality, and theft. If you are involved in any of those right now, I just encourage you to repent. Alright, I got five minutes, I'm reading. So. Then the fifth angel sounded, and I saw a star from heaven which had fallen to the earth, and the key of the bottomless pit was given to him. He opened the bottomless pit and smoke went up out of the pit, like the smoke of a great furnace and the sun. The air were darkened by the smoke of the pit. Then out of the smoke came locusts upon the earth, and power was given to them as the scorpions of the earth have power. They were told not to hurt the grass of the earth, nor any green thing, nor any tree, but only the men who do not have the seal of God on their foreheads. And they were not permitted to kill anyone but to torment for five months. And their torment was like the torment of a scorpion when it stings a man. And in those days, men will seek death and will not find it. They will long to die, and death flees from them. The appearance of the locusts was like horses prepared for battle, and on their heads appeared to be crowns like gold, and their faces were like the faces of men. They had hair like the hair of women, and their teeth were like the teeth of lions. They had breastplates like breastplates of iron, and the sound of their wings was like the sound of chariots of many horses rushing to battle. They have tails like scorpions and stings. And in their tails is their power to hurt men for five months. They have as king over them the angel of the abyss, his name in Hebrew is Abaddon, and in the Greek, he has the name Apollion. The first woe is past. Behold, two woes are still coming after these things. Then the sixth angel sounded, and I heard a voice from the four horns of the golden altar, which is before the, before God. One saying to the sixth angel, who had the trumpet, release the four angels who are bound at the great river Euphrates. And the four angels who had been prepared for the hour and day and month and year were released, so that they would kill a third of mankind. The number of the armies of the horsemen was 200 million. I heard the number of them. And this is how I saw in the vision, the horses and those who sat on them. The riders had breastplates the color of fire and of hyacinth and of brimstone. And the heads of the horses are like the heads of lions, and out of their mouths proceeds fire and smoke and brimstone. A third of mankind was killed by these three plagues, by the fire and by, and the smoke and the brimstone which proceeded out of their mouths. For the power of the horses is in their mouths and in their tails, for their tails are like serpents and have heads, and with them they do harm. The rest of mankind who were not killed by these plagues did not repent of the works of their hands, so as not to worship demons and the idols of gold and of silver and of brass and of stone and of wood, which can neither see nor hear nor walk. And they did not repent of their murders, nor of their sorceries, nor of their immorality, nor of their thefts. Well, you know, uh, how do you not repent in the face of something like this? I, I think at, you know, it, it's worth noting that even in Exodus, why didn't Pharaoh repent? And when some would point out that like, oh, well, God hardened his heart, the phrasing there is actually more of instigation where as God was doing these things, it was hardening Pharaoh's heart. Far, Pharaoh was hardening his own heart in obstinance to the power he was seeing from God. Yeah, yeah. So, oh, boy. So, and also, um, as we talk about this, there's different theories. Some people would try to explain this as, oh, he's just using descriptive language of what he knows to describe maybe our modern machinery or weapons or things like that. I'm just gonna warn you that, one, this book is supernatural in and of itself. Like, we talk about angels, we talk, and we don't doubt their existence, whether it be cherubim or seraphim. I mean, that's not metaphorical for, you know, something modern made by any means. And don't forget that the government just recognized aliens in the last couple of months. Whether you believe it or not, whatever, but there are things beyond what we know and recognize. Right? And, you know, I mean, was it dinosaurs, they, they just started digging up in the mid 1800s? Before that time. Nobody had dug up a ginormous like T-Rex. And so, so, you know, if you were to talk to somebody in the 15, 1600s and told them about dinosaurs, they would have laughed at you. Perspective, right? And so, there is so much we don't know about the earth or what's in it, let alone if there was an abyss and what's down at the bottom of that hole. So, I, I just am one to have an open mind, be like, oh, well, let's, let's see this. And if it turns out to be something else, well, okay, that's fine. But let's never lose how supernatural our faith really is. I mean, don't forget, we believe that God sent his son to the earth 2,000 years ago to die in a typical way of Roman, you know, persecution, of, of Roman execution. And that that, him dying on that cross atones for my sins today. That's supernatural. So let's never lose that flavor as we're talking about this. And now, could God be employing other means and everything? Sure. But, we still have a supernatural faith.